Welcome everyone, I'll call this August 12th, 2025 meeting of council to order at 5:00 PM. This meeting will be held in a hybrid manner where members of council, staff and the public can participate electronically. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded and will be available on the township website. Notice is hereby provided that under the authority of the Municipal Act 2001 and in accordance with the Municipal Freedom of Information and Privacy Act, that all information attained is considered part of the public record. All rules apply to the meeting as if everyone is attending in person and if there is a problem with the technology impacting the proceedings of a meeting, the meeting may be recessed. So I would now ask everyone to rise if they can for the playing of the national anthem. We acknowledge that we are being hosted on the ancestral lands of the Ho'ronoshani, Mississauga and Oma'ama Wrenini people. We acknowledge and welcome the presence of all indigenous people including the Métis, Inuit and other First Nations from across this vast land who also make this place home. The lands we are on today are recognized in the Two Row Wampum, Dish with One Spoon Tea Treaty, Treaty 27 and the Crawford Purchase. And the first item for us on council is the confirmation of the agenda. Do I have a move? Councilor Parks?
I would recommend that the agenda of the August the 12th, 2025 meeting of council be confirmed as circulated.
So moved, seconded by Councilor Ennis. All the question, all in favor, motion has passed. Ask, are there any declarations of pecuniary interest of the general nature thereof in open session for the meetings this evening? Councilor Park?
I would declare on 11.6 the Emerson Street Judge Junior C. Advertising Pilot Program, project extension as I'm a member of the Board of Directors and I've filed my papers.
Thank you. And Councilor Budrick?
I also would like to declare conflict on 11.6 as same situation as Paul and I've already handed in my paperwork as well.
Perfect, thank you. Any other declarations this evening? Saying none, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session. Deputy Mayor Townend?
I move that council now move into closed session to consider a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality pertaining to the Amherstview Community Hall lease agreement and personal matters about identifiable individuals filling the Heritage Committee vacancy pursuant to Section 239.2 C and B of the Municipal Act.
So moved, seconded by Councilor Budrick. All in favor, motion has passed.
Welcome everyone to this evening's council meeting. Council already started at 5:00 and we went into closed session, had a closed session meeting. And I would provide a rise and report at this time from that meeting. That direction was provided to staff pertaining to the Amherstview Community Hall lease agreements. And council also provided direction regarding the filling of the Heritage Committee vacancy. So moving forward, and I apologize, I'm a few minutes late starting this portion of the meeting. Just dealing with a couple of last minute items. And so we'll go back into our open meeting and carry on from there. So there were no presentations and we are up to statutory public meeting. And this is 8.1, the public meeting is 22-2238-052, Ontario Limited, Caitlin Corporation. Loyalist Estates Phase 13 Draft Plan of Subdivision D12015 and Zoning Bylaw Amendment D140102024. A public meeting is being held in accordance with the provisions of the Section 3212 of the Planning Act to consider a draft plan of subdivision and zoning by law amendment. The subject property is municipally addressed as One Loyalist Boulevard. The proposed development is more specifically located on the corner of County Country Club Drive and Loyalist Boulevard in the former Village of Bath. The applications are to facilitate the development of nine townhouse units. And council shall hear in person or by their council solicitor or agent, any person who claims to be affected by the application. So we have staff present and you have some information to share?
Yes, through you, your worship, I'll be giving a quick overview of the application here. So the draft plan of subdivision and zoning by law amendment applications have been submitted to facilitate the development of two townhouse blocks. One containing five street front dwelling units and the other containing four street front dwelling units for a total of nine residential units. All units will front onto the existing developed portion of Country Club Drive. A quick description of the subject property, it's located west of Church Street, northwest of the intersection of the Country Club Drive and Loyalist Boulevard in the Village of Bath. A statutory public meeting in accordance with the Planning Act is now being held to obtain input from the public. All public input will be considered as staff complete the technical review of the applications. And after that, staff will bring forward recommendations and future staff report. That said, the planning consultant is, the consultant planner is present virtually to give a quick presentation and to answer any questions if the council may have those. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. So we do have, there we go. We do have the planner that just came in virtually. So you are on screen now, so please feel free to provide us with your presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, township staff. My name's Angela Scobares, I'm with Macaulay Show Mehausen. And I'm just going to, sorry, Avinash, did you have the PowerPoint presentation there or?
Staff are just working on it now.
Right. Angela, this is Ann. You just have to tell me when to advance the slides.
Okay, yep. So if we can just scoot up to the beginning, that would be great. Thank you. As Avinash had said, the purpose of the meeting tonight is to provide an overview of the proposed residential development which we are calling Phase 16 of the Loyalist Country Club Estates Development. Next slide please. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Loyalist Boulevard and Country Club Drive. It's comprised of approximately 0.427 hectares or just over one acre. Next slide please. And just as for context, I had gone over this at a previous public meeting, but just so you can see where it is in relation to the overall development. Phase 16 is outlined in red. The pink areas are applications that are undergoing plant current, the underway approvals. Gray areas have been completed and the orange have received approvals but are pre-construction. And the next, just for everyone's information, the next public meeting up will be for the expansion of the clubhouse. And for area context, just to show where it is in relation to the overall community. Loyalist Boulevard is south of the property, the golf course and
Welcome everyone to this evening's council meeting. Council already started at five and we went into closed session, had a closed session meeting and I would provide a rise and report at this time from that meeting. That direction was provided to staff pertaining to the Amherstview Community Hall lease agreements. And council also provided direction regarding the filling of the Heritage Committee vacancy. So moving forward, and I apologize, I'm a few minutes late starting this portion of the meeting. Just take dealing with a couple of last minute items. And so we'll go back into our open meeting and carry on from there. So there were no presentations and we are up to statutory public meeting. And this is eight point one, the public meeting is twenty-two, two-two-three-eight-zero-five-two Ontario Limited Caitlin Corporation. Loyalist Estates Phase thirteen Draft Plan of Subdivision D twelve zero-one-five and Zoning Bylaw Amendment D fourteen zero-one-zero-two-zero-two-four. A public meeting is being held in accordance with the provisions of the section thirty-two-twelve of the Planning Act to consider a draft plan of subdivision and zoning by law amendment. The subject property is municipally addressed as one Loyalist Boulevard. The proposed development is more specifically located on the corner of County Town Country Club Drive and Loyalist Boulevard in the former Village of Bath. The applications are to facilitate the development of nine townhouse units. And councils shall hear in person or by their council solicitor or agent, any person who claims to be affected by the application. So we have staff present and you have some information to share?
Yes, through you, your worship, I'll be giving a quick overview of the application here. So the draft plan of subdivision and zoning by law amendment applications have been submitted to facilitate the development of two town townhouse blocks. One containing five street front dwelling units and the other containing four street front dwelling units. For a total of nine residential units. All units will front onto the existing developed portion of Country Club Drive. Quick description of the subject property, it's located west of Church Street, northwest of the intersection of the Country Club Drive and Loyalist Boulevard in the Village of Bath. A statutory public meeting in accordance with the Planning Act is now being held to obtain input from the public. All public input will be considered as staff complete the technical review of the applications. And after that staff will bring forward recommendations in future staff report. That said, the planning consultant is the consultant planner is present virtually. Give a quick presentation and to answer any questions if the council may have those. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. So we do have, there we go. We do have the planner that just came in virtually, so you you are on screen now, so please feel free to provide us with your presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, township staff. My name's Angela Scobares, I'm with Macaulay Show Mehausen. And I'm just going to, sorry, Avanash, did you have the PowerPoint presentation? There or?
Staff are just working on it now.
Right.
Angela, this is Ann, you just have to tell me when to advance the slides.
Okay, yep, so if we can just scoot up to the beginning, that would be great. Thank you. As Avanash had had said, the purpose of the meeting tonight is to provide an overview of the proposed residential development, which we are calling Phase sixteen of the Loyalist Country Club Estates Development. Next slide please. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Loyalist Boulevard and Country Club Drive. It's comprised of approximately point four-two-seven hectares or just over one acre. Next slide please. And just as for context, I had gone over this at a previous public meeting, but just so you can see where it is in relation to the overall development. Phase sixteen is outlined in red. The pink areas are applications that are undergoing plant current, the under one playing approvals. Gray areas have been completed and the orange have received approvals but are pre-construction. And the next, just for everyone's information, the next public meeting up will be for the expansion of the clubhouse. And for area context, just to show where it is in relation to the overall community. Loyalist Boulevard is south of the property, the golf course and single-story detached dwellings. East of the subject site on the side of Country Club Drive are semi-detached and townhouse dwellings. To the north of course, golf course and west is the golf course, car path and clubhouse. Next slide please. So in terms of where we are in the project timeline, we had our pre-consultation meeting with the township at the end of last year. And documents were submitted and the application was deemed complete and circulated for comments in June of this year. Comments have, the majority of comments have been received. There may be some outstanding, but we have them all now. And then tonight we have the statutory public meeting. Once we have any comments from this evening's meeting, along with those, the technical comments received, we will make versions as required and resubmit to the township for staff to prepare their recommendation report to council. Next slide please. Terms of official plan designation, the subject site is designated medium density residential in the town's official plan. The medium density designation permits a range of residential unit types including low-density residential, triplexes, quadra, quadruplexes, makes that row or cluster housing as well as street front townhouses and low-rise apartment buildings and other forms of of multi-unit housing. The maximum density that's permitted in medium density designation is seventy-five units per net hectare and limits the height to a maximum of four stories. The proposed nine townhouses have a density of approximately twenty-one minutes per hectare. Next slide please. The existing zoning is open space, which permits the existing golf course. As a result, an official plan amendment is required to rezone to a residential use. In this instance, we will be seeking a site-specific residential type five zone to facilitate the proposed townhouse development and deal with any site-specific requirements. Next slide please. So this is a copy of the draft plan of subdivision as as Avanash had indicated, there are nine townhouses contained within two blocks of five and four units. They range with a frontage of approximately nine-point-eight-three meters and go up to to sixteen seventeen meters on the end block and units. And they have a lot depth ranging from approximately thirty-one meters to forty-two meters. They have a minimum front yard setback of four meters to the main dwelling and six meters to the garage, so there won't be any protruding garages and enough space on the driveway to park a car. Each unit will have an integrated garage and driveway access off of Country Club Drive, providing a minimum of two parking spaces per unit. Next slide please. This is our proposed zoning schedule. There are two proposed site-specific zone categories. Really, it's just to recognize irregular shape of the of the property and deals primarily with setbacks and coverage. Next slide please. So this is a chart of the required established R five zone provisions and then the items that we are seeking relief from. So in terms of frontage, we meet the requirements for the minimum frontage, minimum setback, as I've indicated, we are looking to reduce to four meters. The interior side yards, for the most part, will meet the township's requirements. Rear yard setback has been reduced on one of the lots due to its irregular shape. And exterior side yards similarly have been reduced slightly. And then coverage has been increased slightly in order to accommodate a couple of the units as well as accessory buildings and structures. The height will be in compliance with the town's township standards. And just, sorry, next slide please. So this is the proposed built form, very similar to what is existing across the street on the east side of Country Club Drive. Next slide please. Terms of background studies, as required, various reports and drawings were included with the submission package for review by the township, county and commenting agencies. The majority of these reports and studies have been completed as part of earlier approvals but have been updated to reflect the subject application. Next slide please. So key, the items, key takeaways, nine street front dwelling townhouses fronting onto Country Club Drive while within maximum density permitted. The proposed use is consistent and in conformity with the provincial legislation and policy initiatives. It conforms to the county and Loyalist official plans. A zoning amendment is required to rezone to site-specific R five category. Technical studies in support of the proposed development have been submitted and are under review by the township. Next slide please. As I had indicated earlier, we will receive the balance of any outstanding circulation comments, revised plans and or reports to address the remaining technical comments. And continue to work with staff, resubmit for additional review, ultimately resulting in a staff recommendation report to council. And that's the end of my presentation, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for the planner at this time? Being none, thank you very much for the presentation and we'll proceed with the public meeting.
Thank you.
So now we will go in chambers and ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this item. If you could please come forward and use one of the microphones at the front of the room. Being none, we will ask if there's anyone in the virtual audience that wishes to speak to this item. If so, please use the raised hand feature and we can bring you into the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Thank you. Well, there's no, no follow-up from staff then, no questions, I guess, so that were presented. Just overall, counsel, are there any final questions to staff before we look at a motion? Being none, we do have a recommendation before us, would someone like to present a motion? Deputy Mayor Townsend.
I move that the report from the Development Services Division, August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, Republic Meeting two-two-three-eight-zero-five-two Ontario Limited Limited Caitlin Corporation, Loyalist Estates Phase sixteen Draft Plan of Subdivision D twelve dash zero-one-five and Zoning Bylaw Amendment D fourteen dash zero-ten dash twenty-two-four be received. And that a recommendation be brought forward to council once comments from the township departments, agencies and public have been addressed.
So moved, seconded by Counsel Ennis. Any comments from the mover, seconder, other members? Call a question home, favor, motion is passed. And moving forward, the next public meeting, Lakeside West, Kenlar Investments, Draft Plan of Subdivision D twelve three-five-zero and Zoning Bylaw Amendment D fourteen zero-zero-four-two-zero-two-five. A public meeting is being held in accordance with the provisions of thirty-four-twelve of the Planning Act to consider a draft plan of subdivision and zoning by law amendment. The subject property is municipally addressed as four-six-six-one Bath Road in Amherstview. The proposed applications are to facilitate the development of a two-hundred-and-sixty-one unit subdivision. Council shall hear in person or by their council solicitor or agent, any person who claims to be affected by this application. Welcome forward staff. You have some information to share this evening.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, counsel. Tonight we have a exciting project, it's the first move into our secondary planned lands west of County Road six, the development's called Lakeside West. They're requesting a draft plan of subdivision and a zoning bylaw amendment. The proposal consists of low, medium and high-density uses as well as future development lands consisting of mixed-use commercial and highway commercial uses. A multi-use pathway located along Amherst Drive and County Road six are part of the proposal. A stormwater block fronting Highway thirty-three and a park block north of, in the northern part of the subdivision are are part of the proposal as well. I think that's about it. Township staff, of course, just as Avanash had said in the first meeting, are here to listen to the public comments. At this point, we're still under technical review regarding the proposal, so we will come back at a later date for a recommendation. But we're here just to hear what the public has to say about it. Mark Tao and John Armadage is are available, I think they're doing a presentation or maybe this chap here. Thanks, and I will pass it over to him.
Great, thank you so much. Great. Okay, hello everyone, my name is Nick Paradina, Urban Development Planner with Kenlar. And today I'm pleased to present with you guys Smith Farm in Lakeside West at four-six-six-one Bath Road. And we're proposing a draft plan of subdivision and a zoning bylaw amendment. So as mentioned, the address at hand is four-six-six-one Bath Road. And the proposed DPS and ZBLA will establish a new development parcels in Amherstview West facilitating the addition of housing and infrastructure, extending the existing built-up area and advancing the creation of a complete community. The site is about nineteen-point-four hectares in size, which is nearly fifty acres. And just to give us an overview of the draft plan, a total of two-hundred-and-sixty-one new housing units are proposed in this phase with various typologies based on servicing capacity. And just to have a more detailed look on the housing mixes here, we propose single-detached lots, semi-detached lots, townhouse with three and four unit blocks and five, as well as double and triple stacked towns. In terms of the official plan and the secondary plan, rather than seeking fresh amendments, the proposed development is fully intended to conform with the existing county and township official plan as well as the Amherstview West secondary plan. It supports phased mixed density and pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods. In terms of zoning, the proposed subdivision generally maintains the intent of the zoning bylaw, but a limited number of modifications are proposed to the three existing residential zones, that being R four-sixteen, which is the low-density residential, R five-twenty-two mid, and the R six-three high-density residential. We plan to permit single semi-detached townhouse, stacked townhouse and mixed uses. And just to add on to that, the zoning requests, like I said, would modify specific zoning permissions to allow for individual housing typologies and law configurations within the subject site. And again, this implements the Amherstview West secondary plan, supports urban design objectives and diversified housing. It has efficient land use principles and also takes into account best practices in terms of setbacks, projections, parking spaces as well as urban design principles. And in conclusion, the requested draft plan of subdivision and zoning bylaw amendment are consistent with PPS policies, consistent with official and secondary plan policies, conform with zoning intent and are compatible with the surrounding area. Any questions?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for the planner at this time? Being none, thank you very much for sharing the information.
Thank you very much.
So at this time I'll follow the same process, so in chambers, if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this item, please step forward, come up to the mics and share your information. Seeing none, I'll go to the virtual audience. If there's anyone in the virtual audience who wishes to speak to this item, please use the raised hand feature and we can bring you into the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, there's no one with their hand raised.
Thank you. So I just opened it back up to counsel, if there's any questions that you have for staff at this time, if there's anything that came up. Counsel Pradrick.
Thank you worship, and this is just a question for staff. Just two simple ones, I think. Can you just remind me, and I think it's on page four of your report. When you talk about minor revision, no further notice would be given. Can you, can you either expand on that or give me an idea what a minor revision might be?
I think if there was a typo of some sort in the public, in a notice or something like that, then we would not hold up the whole process if the intent of the bylaw or the draft plan was obvious.
Okay, thank you, I was reading it on, I read that totally different. And then the second thing, just, I think it's on page twenty, around page twenty, but the parkland is under review, what are we reviewing there? Are we reviewing cash in lieu of, or is it just where it's going or whatever?
No, that's a great question. We would, as it's draft plan, it's under technical review, we would want input from the recreation team and the management group to see, see what what the use is and what, if we need it, number one. I expect we do in this case, but yeah, that would essentially, we just want information, more information and how it'll be accessed and what kind of development will take place on the park and what's needed.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Seeing none, thanks for coming back and answering the questions. Counsel, we do have a recommendation before us, would someone like to present a motion? Counsel Pradrick?
I would recommend that the report from the Development Services Division, August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, Republic Meeting, Lakeside West, Kenlar Investments, Draft Plan of Subdivision D twelve three-five-zero and Zoning Bylaw Amendment D fourteen zero-zero-four-two-zero-two-five be received. And a recommendation be brought forward to council once comments from the township departments, agencies and the public have been addressed.
So moved, seconded by Counsel Willis. Any comments from the mover, seconder, other members? Call a question home, favor, motion is passed. That brings us to open forum. Excuse me. Fifteen minutes of the meeting has been set aside for open forum. Any individual may address counsel regarding an item on the agenda, excluding matters under the statutory public meeting section on the same agenda. Each person has three minutes to speak. Anyone wishing to speak could have registered in advance, which we don't have any signed up. And during, I will also call in chambers if anyone wishes to speak. And during, I will also call in chambers if anyone wishes to speak under open forum, and I will go to the virtual audience and ask for a raised hand if you wish to speak. So I will go in chambers first. Is there anyone in chambers that wishes to speak to council this evening under the open forum? Being none, go to the virtual audience. If there's anyone in the virtual audience who wishes to speak this evening under open forum, please use the raised hand feature, so we can bring you into the meeting.
There's no one interested in speaking under open forum.
Seeing none, that concludes open forum, and we move forward to delegations. First delegation, Scott Kelly and Margaret McKenna of Westbridge Renewable Energy Corp. If you could please come forward. Where the mic is, just push the, I call it the purplish button. There's probably a proper color for it.
Good evening, your worship, Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of council, and everyone in the audience here today. Thank you for having us. My name is Scott Kelly. I'm the Director of Westbridge Renewable Energy Corp. We're a Canadian company. We have offices in Calgary and in Ontario and Toronto. And it's a pleasure to be here tonight along with my colleague and Chief Operating Officer and Director Maggie McKenna, who's joining from Calgary. I believe Maggie is on the Zoom. So Westbridge Renewable Energy is a company that develops utility-scale renewable energy projects. Our focus is solar and battery storage. We don't do wind. We focus on projects that are utility scale, meaning 50, 100 megawatt, 200 megawatt-plus projects. To put that in context, the project that we are proposing here would be a 200-megawatt to 220-megawatt project, and think of that as about 20,000 homes of clean energy for. We have a management team with a lot of experience, successfully developing projects and implementing them in Canada, the U.S., and select European markets, Italy and the UK. We currently have six projects in Alberta, three of which have got AUC approval, two of which have reached the ready-to-build stage, and we are currently participating for three projects in the LT2 project in Ontario, of which this is one of the projects. All of our projects are very much a collaboration with communities in which we are working with. We spend a lot of time with the municipalities, with the local landowners, working within the regulations and the environment that we're working in. Every project is unique, and we look at ourselves as long-term partners with the community and do our very best to benefit the community in every way we can. Again, I've covered most of this, but the way we look at projects and the way we would select an ideal site is obviously is their availability on the local transmission line to add new power, and can we connect to it in an economic way and transfer and transmit the clean energy in an economical and efficient way. We look for non-prime agricultural land where there's very good solar radiance, meaning the ability to generate an excellent amount of energy that makes the project economical. Where there's definite landowner interest, we see the landowners as very much as our partners and where there is municipal and community support and very much where we're working within the guidelines and the policies of the municipalities and the communities that we are partnering with. I'm gonna try and move this, because it's... So the project that we are proposing are in the preliminary planning stage of proposing is a 220-megawatt solar project on 800 acres of land that's designated as rural area by the Loyalist Township. The components would really be the solar PV, photovoltaic panels. Think of the solar panels you would see approximately 10 meters high in a rural environment, quiet, generating solar energy and clean electricity to connect to the grid and supply to the local community and industry. Our plan is to present this as part of the first LTT process in Ontario in the fall, and the target operation for the project would be 2030. As a technical overview, I won't spend a lot of time on this, but in a nutshell, the solar panels are put in place. They generate electricity. It gets converted through an inverter and is connected through a substation directly to the grid. It supplies clean energy to the local community and via the transmission line. In terms of what it would look like, again, typically rows of single, you know, story or 10-meter solar panels, some very small substations and inverters, and gravel-accessed roads and perimeter fencing. We try to keep a fairly low, as much of a low impact as possible and protect the local environment as much as possible. And it's very key in our site criteria and our development. Again, this is the preliminary site layout. It's south of the 401, near Switzerville. We're calling it Project Switzerville. And this is subject to change. We're going through quite a bit of environmental and other consultation work, working with the local municipalities and trying to refine and fine-tune this. But this is a high-level preliminary layout of what the site would look like. In terms of our choice of working within the community here in the municipality, we see a very broad alignment with the township and the policies that are in place and just sort of very high-level, broad compliance with, you know, 610, 610.2.1 and 3.12, and believe broadly that we're meeting all of these criteria with this project. In terms of adding back to the community, it's something we very much take as part of our project. Every project that we build and plan and bring to market includes a small fund that would essentially share some of the revenue and some of the benefit and some of the funding and money that comes from this project with the local municipality. One of the benefits for having a project like this in the municipality is added tax revenue, property tax revenue. It creates jobs both during the construction stage and some permanent full-time jobs for the community. It drives clean renewable energy and reduces the carbon footprint and the emission of the grid, and it helps our province and country meet our electricity demands in the future. So again, we're very, very much a local Canadian company that goes into the communities that we work with, partners with them, and really listens to the local concerns and do whatever we can to make sure the projects are as well-received as possible in these communities. In terms of some of the key considerations, obviously safeguarding wildlife, wildlife roots and the environment is a big part of the planning and the studies and the site selection that we do. Public safety with solar is, there's very little public safety risk, but we adopt, you know, very strict policies in place to make sure all public safety concerns are very adequately addressed. We work very openly with the communities, again, both with the landowners, with the municipalities, with people in the town, and be as collaborative as we can. In terms of some of the steps we've taken in this project, we did have a pre-consultation meeting at the end of July. We have met with several landowners. I've met with several of them personally in the last few weeks myself. We are having an open, while we're here this evening, to discuss it with council, and we're planning an open house just around the corner on the 25th of August. And Maggie will be here in person with me and some other members of the team to discuss face-to-face with anyone in the community who would like to attend. And for anyone in the audience, that's August 25 at the Odessa Agricultural Society Fairground. We'll be back in September with much more finalized plans and be coming to the council for some support. And the final submission is October 16. I don't know if that's the playoff music or not, but thank you very much for your time and open it to any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Counsel, any questions for the presenter? Counselor Prager?
Thanks for the presentation, just a couple of simple ones. In your key considerations, I'm wondering if, under ensuring public safety that no fire or explosion risk, there's got to be some risk. Like, you know, you guarantee 100% there'll be no fires. And I guess, to be fair, what's the history in the project? I think it's in southwest Ontario right now. What's the history there in terms of public safety? And have you had any maybe learnings from previous projects?
I'll pass that one to Maggie if possible. I'm not sure if the mic is working, Maggie, or not.
Hi, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can, please proceed.
Hi, thanks, thank you for having us. I'm Margaret, or Maggie McKenna, Chief Operating Officer. We appreciate your having us today. So in terms of emergency response, we, it wasn't intended to say, like, you know, we can guarantee zero fire risk. Obviously, if there's fires that start outside of the project area and spread inward, or there's going to, you know, grass fires, we can't always prevent that. But, you know, the point is that once we get a little bit further into the design phase, we'll work closely with emergency response, emergency services, and first responders to develop a site-specific emergency response plan that will continue to be kind of iterated as the design is iterated and really getting that final before construction and is part of the municipal permitting stage for the zoning bylaw amendment.
Thank you for that. And just sort of a follow-up. And if I missed it, I'm sorry I missed it. But in terms of lifespan of the project, is there a lifespan? And if so, is there a decommissioning plan that will follow beyond that?
Yeah, so the typical lifespan can be kind of anywhere between 35 and 50 years, depending on whether the panels are replaced and how many times they are replaced during the life of the project. There will be a decommissioning plan. It's required as part of the renewable energy approval process. And we anticipate that there would be coordination and consultation with the Loyalist Planning Department in terms of what that looks like. But the intent of those decommissioning plans is that the site would be fully reclaimed with all of the infrastructure removed and put back to, you know, substantially similar land that it was before, pre-project.
Any other questions at this time from council? Seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation and providing the information to us this evening.
Thank you all for the time.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Counsel, we do have a recommendation before us. Would someone like to make a motion? Counsel Rennis?
With the delegation from Scott Kelly and Margaret McKenna of Westbridge Renewable Energy Corp. Regarding the proposed Switzerville solar project be received.
So moved, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tana. Mover, any comments? Seconder, other members? Call the question home, favor. Motion is passed. Next is Raheem Rauw and Ruth Donald of Northland Power. Just for everyone's information, as well as your own, I did meet with the team, it's been a little while ago now. Did receive some information on this and asked questions and everything. I also provided the information to all of council, so they have all the information that I had at that time as well. So they do have an idea on the project and welcome this evening. If you could just press the button so the red light comes on, then the virtual audience can hear as well. And please proceed with your presentation when you're ready.
Good evening, your worship, councilors. Very good to be meeting with you all today to speak about the battery energy storage project, which we're proposing in Loyalist Township. Okay, so just a brief overview on Northland Power. We're a Canadian-based company, trade on the TSX, founded in 1987 with a long history of operations in Ontario and across Canada, a strong record of community and First Nation consultations and partnerships. And we are a very well-respected member of the communities in which we operate, and we intend to continue that tradition with all of our new projects. Okay, so we'll just kind of move on here, and we'll speak about our operating portfolio in Canada, which is wide-ranging and broad. The two to focus on here are the Oneida Battery Storage Project in Ontario and the Jurassic Battery Storage Project in Alberta. The Oneida Project in Ontario was recently brought online earlier this year, and it's been very well-received by the ISO. In May, it supported the grid and the system operator in preventing stability issues. And so already, you know, the facility was instrumental in keeping the Ontario grid reliable. In Alberta, the Jurassic Battery Storage Project is under construction, and it's set to hit commercial operation in 2026. Okay, so moving on to the project which we're proposing here in Loyalist Township. The project is located south of Highway 401, near Highway 4 and the train tracks across from Link Road. The facility will be up to 200 megawatts, 1,600 megawatt-hours. The project footprint is somewhere between 15 and 20 acres. Final design and engineering is to be completed prior to bid submission in December. It'll be actually completed prior to coming before mayor and council in October. The area is zoned rural, and the project is not cited on agricultural or prime- The area is zoned rural and the project is not sited on agricultural or prime agricultural land. The facility is near other commercial and industrial operating, I guess, yeah, equipment. And the plan is to connect the facility to the adjacent 230 kilovolt Hydro One lines that are just adjacent to the north of the facility as shown in this plan. The project is not anticipated to require an OP amendment as it's considered a permitted use under Loyalist Township zoning bylaw. And this was verified last month with Woodstaff. Well, in the interest of time, we'll proceed over the explanation on technology, but happy to take any questions that arise on this point, as well as efficiencies to the grid. But again, happy to take any questions on this matter. Some known concerns from the public and associated mitigation. So through the two projects, the one that we recently brought on stream and the other one that we're building in Alberta, Northland has, I think, ranks among, you know, the most experienced battery storage developer, constructor and operator. And through those two projects, as well as other projects we're developing elsewhere, we have addressed a lot of concerns and questions that have been raised. And one of them, you know, is around the final location of the facilities within the controlled lands. Given the setback requirements to high voltage equipment, the project can only be sited within a certain kind of small area to the south of the project lands. And so the final layout will be more or less in that particular area. So when the public and council receives the plans in October, when we plan to bring them forward, the final facility, you know, wouldn't move too much out of that area. So the public can be assured that, you know, that what actually gets built is more or less what's shown. The other big concern, of course, is questions around battery fire, which we can speak to at length. And at the public open house, which we are planning to hold on September 15th, we will have a third-party battery expert there and to answer any specific questions. However, you know, through our experience, you know, even internally at Northland, you know, the procedures that have been built up, you know, are sort of industry-leading. And again, happy to answer any questions on this. But, you know, there will be key safety measures at the site, remote monitoring, smoke and heat detection, gas detection, overpressure vents. Each individual battery enclosure has, you know, a suite of fire detection and fire mitigation within each one. The other known concern is visual and noise impacts. Every iteration of a layout is tested for noise compliance. And we adhere, of course, to all provincial regulatory noise requirements. And decommissioning, the project company would be responsible for the removal of the battery unit. And as of now, there's a, you know, a robust sort of recycling program that, you know, is coming up and is expected to be fully robust by the time the project is to be decommissioned. In terms of community benefits, you know, we see three types of community benefits. You know, host community agreement, short-term employment and long-term employment. In terms of, you know, the host community agreement, this, you know, program here would be run in accordance or in conjunction with Loyalist Township governance and recommendations. So happy to kind of work on, you know, exact modalities by which, you know, this would function. In terms of next steps, so presently, we're engaging with, obviously, the municipality, indigenous communities and other stakeholders. The majority of the environmental studies have been done and no quote-unquote red flags have been uncovered in terms of, you know, fatal flaws for the lands on which the project's being built. Noise modeling work, as I mentioned earlier, is continuing with a very reputable third party. And every iteration of the layout goes through a full noise analysis to ensure compliance. And community consultations, more detailed engineering design, interconnection analysis with Hydro One and bid preparation are currently underway. And in terms of next steps, well, of course, today we're speaking to you via this delegation to council. The next big step is September 15th, 6:00 PM at the Loyalist Golf and Country Club. We'll be holding our public open house. And the plan then after that is to seek municipal support resolution on October 14th, 2025. And should, you know, we need another backup day, that would be October 28th, 2025. And the bid would be submitted into the LT2 submission, December 18th, 2025. My contact information is up there. If anybody would like any more information or has questions or concerns, do not hesitate to contact me. And Utele Amral is supporting us as well. So contact one of us too, if there are any questions. I would just note that my email address seems to have a typo, unfortunately. So it's R A W J I, but we can, we'll correct that for you. So folks can get to me directly. And I'll yield back my time.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for the presenters this evening? Saying none, thank you for being here, for presenting to council, providing the information. And we look forward to you working through the rest of the process with staff and the different agencies moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, take care.
Counsel, I would entertain a motion. We do have a recommendation in the agenda. Deputy Mayor Towne.
I move that the delegation from Rahim Roji and Ruth Donald of Northland Power regarding the proposed battery storage on 533 County Road 4 Bath be received.
So moved, seconded by Counsel Parks. Any comments from the mover, secunder, other members? Yes, Counsel Prager.
Just one comment, I probably should have made this the last one too, is to encourage you to consult beyond the minimum distance from the project. Because I think in previous experiences, we have many questions from people who live beyond that. So maybe just figured maybe that might be worth your long-term sanity.
Thank you. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor? Motion has passed. Moving forward, Affordable and Purpose-Built Housing Community Improvement Plan. Welcome. You have additional information to share this evening?
We do, your worship, if I may.
Please proceed.
Thank you. So in consideration of the draft CIP that was presented as part of the agenda, I wanted to note that there is only so much funding available through the Housing Accelerator Fund Agreement. And in developing this program, every effort was made to maximize the outcomes that could be achieved with the resources that are available. The final draft was intent on balancing the eligibility requirements to incentivize affordable units to meet the township's core housing need, while also encouraging the other types of housing required to meet our half targets. In the current draft CIP, as included on the agenda, incentives for additional residential units are limited to those constructed in existing homes and require adherence to affordability parameters in order to be eligible. Staff has received some feedback since the agenda was published that some of the affordability requirements may hinder uptake of the program. And if council has or shares these concerns, there are a few amendments that could be considered if you wish I could go into those, but I won't presume to do that right away.
Thank you. Counsel, we have a recommendation before us. Before we do that, I will just change the order just slightly. I will ask if there are any questions for staff before we present a motion so that everyone is comfortable. Counsel Willis.
I am curious about the potential amendments and what that would do to impact our overall goal to have affordable and more housing.
Okay, thank you. If you could expand then, please.
Certainly, thank you through the mayor then. So opening up the eligibility to provide grants for ARUs in new builds is likely to support the construction of additional rental units, which is desirable for the half targets and also provides additional rental units in the communities. Requiring the affordability parameters for all existing homeowner ARUs may limit uptake for this program when reviewing the average market rent associated with affordability parameters as compared to the current going rate for new rentals. So removing the affordability requirement for the ARU construction would likely incentivize additional units that could be rented at the current going rate for new rentals. To encourage, rather than require, the affordability parameters, the affordable rental incentive could be applied to all ARUs and PBRs, increased to $12,500 and the affordability tenure reduced from 15 years down to five years. All of this in an effort to encourage the construction of affordable housing units despite removing the requirement. And we did draft some more information that we could put on the screen if council wishes to address those items that I just discussed.
Does council wish to have that shared on the screen at this time? Yes, I'm getting nods if we can proceed with that. Okay, so that's potential amend and motion. If everyone had an opportunity, I would open it back up. Are there questions for clarification before we go to a motion? Counsel Prager.
We'll pack up on the screen for a minute, please. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So that amending motion, does that eliminate everything in this five points? Or does that fit into a certain slot there with all the recommendations?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I can explain. So this is an amending motion to the main motion. So for clarity and for process, I would ask that council put the main motion that's in the report on the floor. And then a mover and a secunder could present this amending motion. And if this passes, then you could consider the main motion as amended, which would include this portion.
Okay, thank you. That answered, that clarified? Yeah, you have another question?
And through you again, Director, I'm pretty sure, I know what the answer to this is, but I'm going to ask it anyways. Basically, with this amending motion and everything that happens, this gives us the best chance for success. Is that sort of your professional judgment? Not given there's a lot going on in the world right now with housing slowdowns, et cetera, et cetera?
Thanks for the question, Counsel Prager and through the mayor. That is our thinking, yes. So the way that the CIP is currently drafted, we were using more of a stick to achieve affordability parameters rather than a carrot. And these amendments achieve the carrot for affordability rather than the stick, we feel.
Counsel Willis.
Through you, your worship. I don't know if this is even within your lane or had these discussions with the developers that brought this forward. But my question is, a homeowner or developer, well, homeowner who has a unit that has the affordable rent, we're asking that they maintain it for five years and then they'll get an additional grant. At the end of that five years, are they not subject to landlord-tenant rules that would stick them with that rent for a longer period?
Through the mayor, yes, if the same tenant was in there, yeah.
Any other questions from council at this time? Saying none? We do have the recommendation in our report. Would someone like to present a motion? Counsel Prager.
Thank you, your worship. I would recommend that the report from Corporate Services Strategy and Innovation Department dated August 12th, 2020, re-affordable and purpose-built housing community improvement plan be received. That council enact bylaw 202552, a bylaw to adopt the Affordable and Purpose-Built Housing Community Improvement Plan. That council delegate authority for the execution of agreements related to CIP up to $250,000 to the CAO. That council approve the proposed allocation of HAF resources to be used to fund the proposed CIP incentives. And that council direct staff to finalize all administrative requirements to launch the CIP this fall.
So moved, seconded by Counsel Ross. Comments by the mover? No. Secunder? Other members? Now, if there was, if they wish to include the amendment now, would be the time for someone to make that motion, is that correct? Looking to the clerk? Thank you. So I just wanted to put that out there, that everyone knew the process. So there were no other comments? Back to the mover for final?
None.
If someone wishes to present an amendment, then please do. Deputy Mayor Towne.
So I would move that the draft Affordable and Purpose-Built Housing Community Improvement Plan be amended as follows. A, that the ARU grant be available for new builds at up to $12,500 per secondary unit with a minimum 15-year rental tenure requirement and additional ARI grant of up to $12,500 if the affordability requirements are maintained for five years. B, that the ARU grant for existing homes be changed to up to $12,500 per internal slash attached ARU or $25,000 per accessory structure ARU. And that the affordability parameters for the ARU grant for existing homes be changed to optional, but if adhered to, would include an additional ARI grant of $12,500 per ARU if the affordability requirements are maintained for five years. C, that the ARI grant for PBRs be increased to $12,500 per unit if the affordability requirements are maintained for five years.
So moved, seconded by Counsel Parks. I'm just going to look for the clerk for some guidance here, just to make sure. This is important, I want to make sure I follow the process properly. There is discussion on the amendment as well, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So mover, any comments?
Yes, I mean, I've had some discussions with staff. Director Campbell knows my feelings, I support it. I understand the logic behind it. And I appreciate staff, you know, working to try and I, and I appreciate staff, you know, working to try and find the best of all worlds. I will say that I feel as usual council is between a rock and a hard place because the way I see this is that we're essentially forced to tip the scale in favor of developers to meet our half targets. And the carrot that tips the scale is lowering the affordability requirements, which are designed to address the most dire need of housing stock we have in our township. So, those of lower income in our community will continue to be underserved while we essentially cut developers a check of federal cash to simply build more of what they would build anyway, since we know there's a market. So, I understand the rationale. I appreciate staff's attempts to find the best middle ground, but I'm allowed to be disheartened, and I am.
Thank you. Seconder, Counsel Parks. Sometimes it keeps me going to keep everything straight. Any comments?
No.
Comment? Other members of council, any comments on the amendment? Yes, please proceed.
If the clerk could put the amendment back up, please. So, where I'm, I'm need clarity is the minimum 15-year rental tenure requirement. So, that would be registered on title with those homes if they're new build homes or if they're existing homes?
Yes.
And how would we monitor that?
Yeah, it would likely be monitored on a complaint basis with the current resources that we have right now, it would be hard to monitor that in another way.
And who would complain?
That's a good question.
Okay. So, we really can't monitor it?
City of, through you, Mr. Mayor. City of Kingston requires all ARU incentive recipients to fill out a form annually with the details of the tenancy, their income, because there's a threshold income to qualify to make sure the affordable units are going to the people who need it the most. And it's built into the agreement that they are, all recipients of incentives are required to fill out these forms on an ongoing basis.
That could be a part of our process going forward then as well. Okay. Any other questions or comments at this time? Counsel Pradrick.
Just a brief comment, I can appreciate the deputy's consistent viewpoint on things that maybe are a little out of our jurisdiction or we're maybe backed into a corner. And, and I do know through conversations with people that whether it's developers or small business, there's a slowdown and it's no fault of anything in this country, I don't think. But any, any way we can maybe jumpstart that a bit is appreciated. And thanks to the staff for sort of looking, looking beyond sort of the status quo.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go back to the mover for final. Call the question, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion is passed. So, that addresses the amendment. Now, we're back to the original motion. And any I'll go through it again. The mover, any comments? Seconder, I believe was Counsel Willis. Other members, any comments? Call the question, all in favor. Motion is passed, thank you. And I would just like to thank staff for all of the work that's been done on the CIP. It's been a great deal of work. And also, as proven tonight, being flexible, being open to suggestions and receive information and truly consider everything and provide options for consideration even this evening after the report is done, still trying to make sure that everything is met. Thank you very much. The next one up is the 2025 Draft Asset Management Plan. Welcome. You have some additional information to share this evening?
We have a brief presentation to, prior to adopting the 2025 Asset Management Plan.
Does it start with photos?
I, I do have some photos, but.
Everyone in the audience, proud new grandfather. So, I had to, I had to get a little, I, I already welcomed them to the club earlier today.
Thank you very much. Presentation tonight is a follow-up to the previous presentations that I've given council over the last 18 months. There was the 2024 Asset Management Plan. In December 2024, we provided a presentation to council on developing the proposed levels of service. And then finally, in June, we came back with the proposed levels of service that were adopted by council. So, to keep things rolling fairly quickly, we're not going to recap a lot of that information that was in the previous presentations, but we, we did want to provide that for reference. We're now entering phase four, or our final phase of the development phase of our asset management plan. And so, under the regulation, we were required to provide our build through a series of steps, our asset management plans. And that our final, our final plan out of this development phase is the culmination of all those various reports, where we've, we've dealt with the core assets, we've dealt with the non-core assets, we've dealt with current levels of service, now we're dealing with proposed levels of service. And then, starting next year, we move away from the development phase into our, kind of our continuing improvements phases. Every year, we'll provide an annual report to council on how we're meeting our targets. And then, every five years, a minimum of every five years following that, we're required to update our asset management plans moving forward. But it's, it's definitely been a lot of work to get here by a lot of various staff people and, or staff members and quite happy to be able to roll this up tonight, so. Some key changes in the 2025 AMP. There were CPI adjustments for non-unit rates. So, any of the cost of buildings or other items that had values in our asset management plan, we've adjusted for inflation up until November of 2024, which is the last CPI adjustment that our asset management plan had uploaded into the system. We've added the 2025 building condition assessments. So, starting in May, we went around and surveyed the vast majority of our facilities, documented the, the condition and the assets and, and come up with a draft value for what those, those assets would be. We have not finalized the condition assessment reports yet. So, at this point, it is still draft information, but we've included the draft information in the 2025 AMP. And any modifications coming out of our further reviews will, will be modified in our, in our AMP as we move forward. The road ratings, the 2025 road ratings were completed by Public Works. The plan or the system has been updated to include those road ratings. We've included the 2024 road sign assessments that were completed. We've included the proposed levels of service that we brought forward to council back in June. We've talked about the debt reduction savings in that last meeting and how as the municipality is going to be taking on additional debt, that we didn't feel that we should be including the, we're not, it's not really feasible to conclude, include debt reduction savings moving forward. So, as part of the recommendations, you'll see that, that, that additional savings from what was proposed in 2022 has been eliminated moving forward. And, and then we have updated recommended annual, annual increases coming out of the AMP. So, just quickly, from a state of the local infrastructure, our total asset replacement cost is for 2025 is $824 million. This is approximately a $50 million increase from 2024. 16 million of that is related to updated facility costs. And this additional 13 million was related to developer-donated assets received in 2024. And approximately 84% of our assets are, are considered roads, water, sewer, and storm networks. When we look at the condition, I spoke about, you know, Loyalist is in a fairly good state when we start looking at our, our infrastructure. And we, we sometimes focus on the bad and we, we need to look at what's good. And the reality is 92%, 92% of our assets are in fair or better condition. That's, that's a lot of municipalities would love to have that, those type of numbers. And, and while we do have 8% of our assets are in poor condition and we continue to work on improving those, there's about a value or a $66 million value for those, those 8% of our assets. So, when we look at the risk rating and replacement costs, so, risk, risk rating is generated by taking the consequence, which is a number of one to five, times the probability of failure. And that's one to five, and we come up with a risk rating of, of between one and 25. So, generally, there are 101 assets when we look in the, in the red and the orange boxes. There's 101 assets with a value of about $35.4 million that would be deemed to be high or very high risk. And as an asset ages and it gets to the end of its life, it will naturally tend to trend into those higher, higher-risk assets, which again is staff's key to, we need to be dealing with these and, and moving forward versus something that's a low probability and a low consequence, which typically are newer assets. This slide has the, similar to slide to last year, there were very little changes. There's again the $35.4 million in high and very high-risk assets. And I've kind of summarized them just for council's information. You know, there's several emergency service vehicles, there's several Public Works vehicles and equipment. There's some facility work, there's play structures and a few other items on there that we, we need to continue to work through. And the majority of those high and very high assets remain to be the pipes in our water system. And, and obviously, we have a, a fairly large water system for the municipality our size. And, and that, that tends to be where we're seeing the highest risk. And a lot of the, the, a lot of the risk is in the metal water pipes that were put in pre-1970s. That's where we're seeing it. And then, the other thing we're flagging on, and again, we flagged last year is we have an issue with the Odessa water mains being thin-walled PVC pipe. And typically with plastic pipe, we have a much, we have an 80-year life. We're feeling that with the thin-walled plastic pipe, that's not the case. Typically, it's stable as long as nobody touches it or nobody goes near it. And we, you know, we're not doing construction, but as we start to rebuild our roads, we've had failures in Odessa where the water, it's a catastrophic failure because the pipe has become brittle. So, as road construction is proceeding, then the recommendation to, has been to replace those water mains. So, typically, they are being replaced prior to what we would consider high risk. But they are just right on the verge now of becoming a high-risk pipe in the asset management system. By the time we report back in five years' time, there's an additional $8 million of high-risk pipes in Odessa that would be considered higher risk. And again, underground pipes are difficult to visually assess. So, you know, we really, the only way to do condition assessments on them is we have to dig them up, we have to do sampling on them. There are some non-destructive-type testings that could be done by utilities. And they're, they're looking at a variety of ways of testing those, those water mains in order to narrow down which ones are the highest risks and which ones can be put off as we move forward, so. And the 2025 Water Main Relining Program includes sampling of some of our higher-risk water mains, so. The next few tables kind of show the results of our 2024 AMP with the 20, the, sorry, the results of our 2025 AMP with the differences from 2024 shown in red text just for your information. And then, generally, the average annual requirement is increased by about $720,000 a year to $11.3 million. And this represents an increase of approximately 6.8%. And then, the tax-funded annual deficit continues to see pressures from the high rate of new residential development, higher capital replacement costs, the annual capital contributions not keeping pace with higher rates of inflation due to ongoing budget pressures. So, I'd mentioned previously that we had, we had looked at eliminating the, or had included eliminating the debt reduction savings. So, the table shown here does not include the debt reduction savings that would have been in previous examples. The six-point, there's a $6.1 million infrastructure deficit from the previous slide, which is shown here. And to continue to meet a 20-year target for closing that funding gap, the the annual increase to the to, for capital, the, sorry, the annual increase for, in tax revenues for capital asset management would need to be increased from 1.1 up to 1.4%. So, we were 1.1 in 2002, sorry, 2022. And this, so there's a 0.3% increase. And the reason why we're using 2022 here for comparator is the, that's what was the last plan that council approved in 2024, we didn't make any adjustments to those, those numbers, we, we stayed with the 2022 rates. So, we look at the water and sewer funding here. Again, there's a $907,000 increase to the annual requirement to fund our water and sewer assets. And the deficit has increased by $150,000 annually. So, when, what that starts to look like when we talk about water rates, we'd be looking at about a point, a 0.3% increase from where we were in 2022. So, we'd be increasing the water rates at 0.5% annually moving forward. And on the sewer side, the difference from 2022 would be approximately a 1% increase more than what we were increasing previously. So, we'd be looking at a, at 2% annual increase moving forward. So, for the 2025 recommendations in the AMP, there are two places within the report on pages 139 and 146 of the AMP, where it has individual recommendations for both the general rate and the user rate. So, again, the recommendations are that the, that increasing the tax revenues by 1.4% each year for the next 20 years solely for the purpose of phasing in full funding to the asset categories covered in this section of the AMP. Increasing water user revenues by 0.5% each year for the next 20 years solely for the purpose of phasing in full funding to the asset categories covered in this section of the AMP. Increasing the sewer user revenues by 2% each year for the next 20 years, again, solely for the purpose of phasing in full funding to the asset categories covered in that section of the AMP. Continuing to allocate the CCBF and OCF funding as outlined within the AMP. Increasing the existing and future infrastructure budgets by the applicable CPI on an annual basis in, in addition to the deficit phasing. Elimination of the use of debt reduction savings moving forward. And then, following the completion capitalization of the $49.5 million renovation project at the WJ Henderson Recreation Center, did the township update the asset management plan and financial recommendations? And certainly, if, you know, adding, adding $50 million of assets is a fairly large percent. And staff feel that it's, there's a lot of benefits to us. Instead of waiting five years to do that update, that we would go ahead and, and update our asset management plan following the completion and capitalization of that project. Another benefit to going ahead and doing that is it gets us off the cycle of all the other municipalities, so we're hiring consultants. You know, every five years, everybody's on the same timeline right now, so it's been a challenge, you're paying more, getting off that cycle, so we're, it'll, it'll make it easier to, and hopefully, better pricing as we move forward with hiring consultants. And then, finally, on the final slide. And then finally, on the final slide, um, we have the twenty twenty five asset management, uh, plan, financial implications to the tax levy and the director of finance is here who, uh, would sure be happy to answer any questions around that. And what that would look like, so. That would be the.
Thank you. Counselor, are there any questions for clarification at this time? Counselor Prudrick.
Thank you through your worship. And if, uh, if you don't have the actual number, that's fine. Maybe you could just at some point give it to me. I'm just, I was interested when you said that the metal water pipes in terms of, uh, I guess their longevity or their state of whatever. In a percentage, you have any idea how much of our ninety, whatever percent it was in terms of the water pipes, any idea would it be half, be a quarter?
I don't know that one off the top of my head. I, I certainly have the information. It's not one I, I had.
That's, that's fine. I was just trying to get it. Uh, it's interesting. This is a comment. I don't know if I'm allowed to comment. But when I look at that as a, as a person who, you know, I'm, I'm reading all facility reports, it's interesting to note that, uh, we have so much hidden infrastructure. And that's where the majority of your department's money goes. And yet, you know, it, it, you know, it's the WJ Henderson project. It's things like that that are in the big picture. Yeah, it's a lot, but it's, you know, it's a smaller percentage. And I think that's something that probably escapes the average person because you're not thinking what's on the ground, right? In terms of, and you could go back, do you mind, Alex, going back? I think it's about nine pages back. Can you do that on that? I don't know. I don't remember the title or I would tell you. Maybe one more. No, oh, it's passed. Sorry. I missed it. Oh, Carol, yeah, that's, that's a good one there. So, just clarify for me. So in terms of the infrastructure deficit, if, um, in that sense there, that chart, if, you know, and in the, in the sense of thinking, if you could easily, you know, if you could put five point seven increase on your taxes, uh, in five years, that deficit would be zero. Is that what that chart means?
That, that, that's correct. If, if we in, uh, increase the, uh, general tax rate, uh, by five point seven percent annually, so it's five point seven percent this year, five point seven next year, the year after, five years. That would, that would eliminate the deficit.
Okay, fair enough. And then, um, just a little clarification. So when you say full funding, you mean like you get to the zero and then you're at a point where you're not going into a deficit, you're just continuing with your plan? Is that what that means for funding?
That's correct. So the, the annual requirement is, uh, there's a, uh, each asset has its own annual requirement, uh, to maintain that. And typically it's the, the life of the asset, um, or the, the cost, the replacement cost of that asset divided by the number of years, uh, the estimated useful life. So if you've got a hundred thousand dollars and you, you've got a hundred years, then you're looking at it like, was it ten thousand dollar, um, annual, annual requirement to maintain that asset. So you take every single asset has that type of value, you add it all up in each of the categories. And that's how you come up with the annual requirements for water, annual requirements for sewer, annual requirement for roads, uh, moving forward.
Any other questions for clarification? Counselor Willis.
Thank you through your worship. The numbers that you're giving us are the doom and gloom and don't include opportunities. So if there's a federal program for infrastructure funding, that would benefit us, right? That would be.
That is correct. So if it, if it's not a, a standard, like the, the OCF funding is included because we know we get, we get that money on a regular basis. If it's money that we get one off type projects, we, we continue to look for, uh, funding opportunities through grants and other sources. Then we take that, that money comes in and would reduce our, our, uh, annual needs going forward as, as those type of projects proceed. So.
Any other questions for clarification? Seeing none. We do have a recommendation before us. Would sir, someone make a motion? Counselor Ennis.
Thank you through the mayor. Recommend, uh, one, that the report and presentation from the Corporate Services Strategy and Innovation Department, August twelfth, twenty twenty five, re twenty twenty five draft asset management plan be received. Two, the council approved the twenty twenty five draft asset management plan and its recommendations as attached to this report with any budget implications each year to be approved in the budget process and authorize the Director of Corporate Services Strategy and Innovation to make any required non-material amendments. And three, that staff make the final approved twenty twenty five asset management plan available to the public via the township website and provide a copy to the Ministry, Ministry of Infrastructure.
So moved. Seconded by Counselor Prudrick. Any comments from the mover?
Just that I think staff's recommendations are prudent and reasonable. Uh, thanks to staff for the work that went into getting here.
Thank you. Seconder, any comments? Other members? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor, motion is passed. Thank you. Next is the Integrity Commissioner's Services. Welcome. And do you have anything additional to share this evening?
No, I did not.
So counsel, we do have the report with the recommendation before us. Someone like to put a motion on the floor. Counselor Broderick, or Counselor Prudrick.
Uh, recommenders one that the report from the Clerks Division dated August twelfth, twenty twenty five are integrity commissioner services be received and that the council authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the contract renewal with air and bareless until December thirty first, twenty twenty seven.
So moved. Seconded by Counselor Ennis. Any comments from the mover? Seconder? Other members? Yes. Counselor Willis. Sorry, I say comments. After the motions on the floor, comments or questions, whatever.
Thank you. Um, through your worship. On, uh, page three of the report, uh, the cost for the integrity commissioner, and this was all within this current contract that's existed since twenty nineteen, the costs were thirteen hundred and eleven hundred. And then there was a busy year of, of investigations. After that, we're seeing eighty three hundred, sixty seven hundred, seven thousand. Is there any reason for that leap from a thousand dollars a year to seven thousand dollars a year?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Willis's question, it would depend on the number of, um, inquiries received by the, um, by the integrity commissioner. So it could be members of the public reaching out, or it could be members of council or members of committees reaching out. And, um, I suspect that, uh, because two thousand twenty two may have been, um, obviously the, the new term of council, the first year, so it might be, um, just a bit of jump, just so, um, more councils are reaching out and more committee members are reaching out. So that could be the reason why it, there was a bit of a jump.
Are we provided metrics on that that we could justify? I just, I'm concerned because the recommendation is that we don't go to RFP. We haven't gone to RFP for six years. The county's going to RFP, all the other townships are going to RFP. But we've got, you know, sevenfold the cost that it was at the beginning of this contract. And we don't have measurements that say, yes, they are getting more calls.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Willis. We, under the current contract, there's no, um, reporting mechanism. The clerks, the clerk's office sees the invoices, but, um, one of the recommendations or part of the, the contract renewal is to require the integrity commissioner to provide an annual report to council directly, which would have that information. But at the time, at this time, under the current contract, um, there's no reporting mechanism.
So the report mentions bill nine. Can you explain for me why the recommendation is that we don't go to the market and, and participate in the RFP that's being led by the county?
Yes, uh, to Counselor Willis's question. So the recommendation to renew the current contract, um, is for a number of reasons. First and foremost is the, um, the implications from bill nine, uh, and the changes that, that, um, would be imposed to the integrity commissioner's role, uh, if bill nine was, was, um, was enacted. Um, and then, uh, the second reason is the upcoming election, introducing a new inter, integrity commissioner to, um, a new council. There are some implications to that. And then, um, the current integrity commissioner, um, I haven't heard any comments, negative comments, uh, about, uh, their role and, um, the services that they provide. So, um, that's, that's a third reason. And then, um, the, yes, so, so those are three reasons why, um, uh, contract renewal is recommended instead of going, doing an RFP.
Sorry, it's the bill nine I don't understand because if a bill comes, it comes regardless of who our integrity commissioner is. So, so why would we not make a change if it benefits the township?
There, there are some, um, some changes proposed, so the standardization of municipal quota conduct. Yes, if, uh, in. So, um, as a director, um, with her support, so, um, it's, it's the continuity of the services that, that is available to council at this time. And, um, you know, as the report says, the response rate and, um, the availability of the integrity commissioner to provide these services in a timely manner. So those all affect, um, the, the recommendation. But going back to Counselor Willis's question about bill nine, there is, um, so at this time, um, the bill is at committee level and it is, it is expected that it's going to be passed in October in, um, in time for, to take place, um, to take effect in two thousand twenty six with a new term of council. However, the bill also proposes, um, certain, so there is discussion that it might propose, um, integrity commissioners to have, um, certain type of training or, um, the Ontario Integrity Commissioner to have a, um, uh, uh, like a roster of integrity commissioners for councils to choose from. And so there, there are some implications to, to their role, uh, that is really, um, that is outstanding and, uh, the implications are not like fully understood at this time. So basically what I'm trying to say is the recommendation, um, staff recommendation is so that there's some continuity of service, um, some qual, some continuity of quality of service from the integrity commissioner's office as well.
Does that answer your question? Okay, I wasn't, I couldn't tell by the look on your face that you're still processing, so I wanted to give you an opportunity. Any other questions for clarification? Counselor Prudrick.
And, and this is just a comment. Um, so recommending a two-year renewal, um, with everything the same, or are we going to add a clause about reporting to council? And given what you've said about bill nine, is, is there an an, an advantage to going for an extra year, see what, like, seeing what falls out? In, in a sense, if it's a two-year and then they recommend a roster and our guy isn't on it or our person isn't on it, where are we there? Or is that something that's sort of, it's nebulous, it's out there and they'll deal with it. And I, I can go either way, but I'd just be interested in why two years and not one, given that e- even if there was an entire new council in October twenty twenty six, everybody would be starting on the same page with a new person or persons or whatever. I'm just, that's just my thoughts on that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, um, the recommendation to extend it until December two thousand twenty seven, uh, is so that the new term of council has enough time to, um, to, you know, learn about the integrity commissioner, their role. And then if they choose to, uh, uh, renew the contract, they can, a- and they have enough time to do that. If, um, originally, yes, we did talk about extending it just for a year. But, um, the new term of council starts November fifteenth, two thousand twenty six. And then the new, the, the contract would end December. So that's not enough time to, for one, council to learn about the role of the integrity commissioner to make, uh, a decision like that. Uh, so that was one of the reasons for the recommendation. And with respect to the roster, um, I think I, I can't speak for our integrity commissioner, but I could, I could probably assume that our integrity commissioner is going to do whatever they take, need to keep, providing that service to different councils. So if a training was required or there was some, um, roster created, I'm, I'm assuming our, uh, current integrity commissioner would try to get on that roster. Because they don't only serve, um, Loyalist Township, they serve many other municipalities.
Yes, Director.
Thank you through the mayor. Just to add to the clerk's comments, there are also notice, notice provisions in the contract that would allow us to, uh, terminate the contract if, for example, a roster was created and this, uh, organization was not on it.
I'd just like to clarify, there was a comment or a question, in, in a question, I guess, was a comment about, um, the county is proceeding with an RFP. At the county council meeting, there was a question asked, um, they were looking for clarity that, um, what would happen if, if the bill did not come past legislation or there was no clarity on the provincial legislation? And at that time, the clerk of the county, um, said that staff would come back to county council, to see what, how county, county council would like to proceed, whether to go to an RFP or do similar to what we are, where do an extension until there's more clarity to make sure that when they do the RFP, it is, uh, pertinent to the new legislation. So the, the direction was to yes, proceed. As, but if, if bill nine does not pass and there isn't clarity yet, then they will come back to see if county council wants to wait a little longer and do an extension. Okay, just wanted to make sure that that was out there, um, for clarity. Okay, so everybody, yes. Yes.
Just a general question on the recommendation. When we say the mayor and the clerk to execute contract renewal, are we talking status quo? Or are we adding in maybe a clause about, um, some accountability in terms of, you know, you get a receipt, but, or you get an invoice and, you know, that's, is that the practice in the industry that you get an invoice and, you know, that's it? Because that, I'd like to know in a, in a numerical sense, if there's, you know, is that one complaint that costs us seven thousand? Is it seventy at?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Project's question, uh, we would try to, um, uh, write the, the new contract to include an annual report to, directly to council. And I have seen other municipalities do this. I'm not sure why it wasn't included in, um, Loyalist Township's contract in the first place. So that's something that we can definitely put into the new, uh, new contract. Yes.
Okay. So I think we've addressed all of the questions. So I would ask for a recommendation. Counselor Prudrick. Sorry.
That's right.
You are right. Because the question was asked, if they can ask a question. Yep, so, okay. And it's only, it's only ten to eight, no, already. So back to the mover. No final comment, call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion is passed. Impost fee deferral agreement. Thank you for reminding me. Welcome. Excuse me, do you have any additional information to share on this item?
Not tonight, Your Worship, no additional information.
Okay. So, Council, we do have a recommendation before us, would someone like to make a motion? Deputy Mayor Towne.
I move that the report from the Finance Department dated August twelfth, two thousand twenty five, re impost fee deferral agreement interest charges be received. And two, the council authorized the deferral of impost fee agreement executed pursuant to bylaw two thousand eighteen dash zero two three with Ronald Tasker and Bronny Crook be amended to calculate interest rate on a simple interest calculation. At the rate of one point two five percent per month, fifteen percent annually for unpaid fees for the first two years, then zero point one six percent per month, two percent annually for any outstanding impost fees.
So moved? Do you have a second? Counsel Willis, any comments from the mover?
Just my thanks for staff to staff for their assistance on this.
Thank you. Okay, second or any comments or questions? Counsel Prager.
Thank you, through your worship, just a question. Given this scenario and it was a communication lapse, is there anything now in place to sort of prevent that from happening again? Or is that something we should be looking into?
Through your worship, yes, we will be putting in place that there is going to be a statement that's going to be sent out when we have these types of agreements. This is an unusual agreement, but we do have something now in place and our council's receivable, so they will send the statements out.
Any other members of council? Back to the mover for final, call the question, all in favor? Motion is passed, thank you. The final two thousand twenty four to two thousand thirty three parks and recreation master plan. Welcome. Do you have anything additional to share at this time?
Just if I may, I'd like to thank all involved in the development of the guidance document. This process started in July of two thousand twenty three and the final plan is very thorough and full of many great ideas. You know, I recognize, I recognize it's a very ambitious plan that should be considered a guide, a strategic guide and not necessarily a to do list. As well. You know, as we, as outlined in the report, as we are looking at implementing the the recommendations that are the financial ones. You know, we will be looking, you know, at prioritizing based on need and use, avoidance of service redundancy, asset requirement obligations, phased and adaptive executions and oversight, council oversight and budget alignment. You know, the endorsement of the plan does not necessarily mean that, you know, all of the financial recommendations that are here aren't being implemented or or being recommended. What it does mean is that each, you know, it's a it's a guiding document and anything that has financial implications will have to be looked at through those that lens and brought back to council along with every other budget and and approved through the regular budget process. And it needs to look at how it fits into our long term financial plan and and all of those, all of those key parameters to ensure we're we're executing it in a in a responsible financial manner.
Thank you. So we've had this before, it's up for final, is unless there's any. Clarification questions, we do have the recommendation, would someone like to put, make a motion? Deputy Mayor Towne.
I would move that the report from the Community and Customer Services Department Recreation and Facilities Division dated July tenth, two thousand twenty five, re the final two thousand twenty four to two thousand thirty three Parks and Recreation Master Plan be received. And two, that the final two thousand twenty four to two thousand thirty three Parks and Recreation Master Plan be endorsed.
So moved, seconded by Counsel Ennis. Any comments or or questions?
Just obviously thanks to staff for their their work on this. It's been a long time and and we as council have been a principal driver of of seeing this. And we we know as council how important our recreation services and programming are to our residents. I also appreciate the director's comments and the author of the report's comments. You know, in in the report, the implementation sort of disclaimer and expectations, you know, I I appreciate that comment inevitably. I think, you know, the next, the next incoming council next year will have, you know, challenging financial prospects on all sorts of levels and recreation is no exception to that. But I think it provides a comprehensive picture of of certainly the scope of what the the kinds of things that we want to see in the township. And I also want to thank the author for this report because, of course, we have lost a a recreation manager in 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 recent times. And and Mr. Sobolski has certainly had to to pick up, pick up this ball. And so again, my my appreciation.
Thank you. Seconder?
There's a mayor, I think it's an important update to make for the township and to provide a guiding framework for recreation. I think it's a balanced approach. You know, some of the, you know, larger investments, you know, such as phase two of the other X are pushed out, so there might be some disappointment there. But I think on the other hand, there's some exciting lower cost, higher impact positive investments in the shorter term that could possibly be made. So I think it's a, I think it's a balanced, a balanced approach that that council and residents can support, hopefully.
Thank you. Other members of council? Counsel Prager.
Just just a comment. I echo both my colleagues there, but I was happy to see the recognition of the role that maybe the private sector can have and and community groups and as a partnership, because nothing works if there's not partnerships. And I was also pleased to see, I think it's around page twenty nine, the the role that Parks and Rec and Culture and the Arts can do together. And I think that's something that's important just for streamlining services and not, you know, talking in this silo and that silo and not knowing what each other's doing.
Thank you. Other members? Back to the mover for final, call the question, all in favor? Motion is passed. Amherstview Jets Junior Sea Club Advertising Pilot Project Extension. And Counsel Budrick and Counsel Prodrick did declare. Conflict on these, this item will not be participating in the voter of the conversation. So anything additional to share on this one?
Nothing further at this time.
Council? Counsel Willis?
I'll make them.
Yes, received.
I move that the report from Recreation Parks and Facilities Division dated August twelfth, two thousand twenty five, re Amherstview Jets Junior Sea Club Advertising Pilot Project Extension be received. And two, that council authorized the extension of the agreement for the current advertising pilot project with the Amherstview Jets Junior Sea Club for an additional one year term under the existing terms and conditions, extending through the end of the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six Provincial Junior Hockey League season, including playoffs.
So moved? Do I have a second? Counsel Parks, mover, any comments? Seconder? Anyone else? Call the question, all in favor? Motion is passed. Can you just make sure Counsel Prager knows? Thank you. Next item is fire protection grant transfer payment agreement. And welcome. Do you have anything additional to share on this item?
Nothing particular, just mentioning that this was year one of a three year grant process. We actually have meetings scheduled on Thursday to find out what the process is for year two. So this is some of the first significant funding the fire service has seen from the provincial government and, you know, my whole time in the fire service. So it's it's really exciting that we're seeing that support at that level of government and we really appreciate it, so.
Great, thank you. Council, we do have a recommendation before us, would someone like to put a motion on the floor? Counsel Prager.
I would move that the report from Emergency Services Division dated August twelfth, two thousand twenty five, re Fire Protection Grant Transfer Payment Agreement be received. And that council authorized the fire chief and chief administrative officer to execute the transfer payments agreement. That the township with two fire protection grant payments is approved by the Office of the Fire Marshal. Thirty two thousand nine hundred twenty one dollars and eighty cents and three hundred sixty one dollars and seventy three cents for a total of thirty three thousand two hundred and eighty three dollars and fifty three cents. And that the funds be allocated to purchase cancer prevention equipment.
So moved? Do we have a second? Counsel Willis, anything from the mover? Seconder? Other members? Call the question, all in favor? Motion is passed. And we'll stay tuned for this year's. Okay, so the next is a recommendation to go into Committee of the Whole, would someone like to make a recommendation? Deputy Mayor Towne.
So moved?
Seconded by Counsel Ennis, call the question, all in favor? Motion is passed.
All right, I'll call Committee of the Whole to order at eight oh five. Any declarations of pecuniary interests, general nature thereof, seeing none, items for consideration, municipal road preservation and improvement plan? And I'll turn to. The Director, the Public Works Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. So let's talk about roads. Specifically, the municipal road preservation and improvement plan that staff has developed. Anyway. As part of this plan, we will, we will be talking about. What exactly, what exactly an access or what exactly an acceptable roadway is? How we currently preserve our roads and what triggers improved improvements for our roadways? So in general, an acceptable road would be well drained, that being either through roadside open ditch or through buried storm sewer. The road will have an adequate platform width based on the need and the class of the road. Free of unnecessary roadside hazards and where those hazards exist, they they are to be protected by some sort of engineered protection system, i.e. guide rail. There are in general, three different types of road surfaces, that being HPC, which is asphalt. And HPC stands for high class bitumen. There is low class bitumen, which is surface treatment, otherwise known as tar and chip. And of course, we have granular or gravel roads. These are just some, some examples of what those types of road surfaces look, look like. The MLCB or surface treated roads, as you can see, are kind of more. Well, on the early onset, they're more gray and kind of you can see more of more of the stones on the surface. Whereas asphalt is, this is an example of a very new road, a very black and it should be a very tight, tight surface. You shouldn't be be able to see a lot of the exposed stone. And of course, the gravel is gravel. And in this example, this is a gravel road that has also received dust control through the placement of calcium. Preservation focuses on, we want to extend the lifespan of the road. We want to keep the road in good, good repair. And in doing that, we hope to prevent deteriorate deterioration to the point of having to proceed with full reconstruction. The preservation cycle basically consists of, we we have staff that. Look at all our roads every spring to do road assessments. From that, we produce a list of pri priorities. That we can then present to council and then from there we proceed with the approved work. Preservation strategies for a MHC B or a Mashville roads. We have, these are currently the processes that we that we endorse. We have restore restorative surface ceiling, which is a placeholder for very poor roads before we proceed with a full. Full rehab or and or full reconstruction. We have what's called a pres, a preservative seal, which basically we want to apply to a fairly new asphalt road that will extend the 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 waterproofing of that. Um, surface. Usually we start doing, doing that process at about the five, the five. Year mark. We have crack treat treatment, which is exactly what that sounds like. We are, we just treat. We just treat the cracks in the asphalt by either crack sealing or crack filling or a combination there thereof. We typically would do, do that. Um, every three to five, five years, years which then adds roughly. Five years of life. From there, we can go with a micro-surfacing which we would consider for a fair to good road. And again, that, that adds about five to seven years of life. We have melon pave which we currently carried out in a mammoth view this, this year on multiple roads. We typically would perform this on fair to poor roads. Basically removing that, that degraded layer of asphalt and, and adding a new layer. And again, typically this would add about fifteen to twenty years of life to that road. Similarly to a asphalt overlay. Again, we would, we would, we would perform this on a, on a fair to poor road. And that would add fifteen to twenty, twenty years. This is twenty-five years, but. Depending on the type of road, whether it be urban or rural. Preservation strategies for an LCB or surface treated road, once the surface is established. We, we usually want to apply as a, well, a. Single layer. At the three-year mark and that could be either of another surface treatment or a, a micro surface. And then from that point on, we look to apply additional layers. Based on the assessments about every seven years. This process helps ensure that the road stays waterproof. Which then prolongs the life of both the road surface and the road base. Where we have a LCB or a surface treated road that that has flattened or has lost its crown. Which does happen, we can then perform what's, what would, what would be called a double. Micro surface which would apply a, a layer down the, the middle of the road and then a second layer. Over top which then helps re-establish that crown. That process also. Can address some minor running and of course it addresses cracking as well. For roads that, or for roads that have deteriorated at a higher rate than expected. Whether that be due to higher volumes of traffic or. The type of traffic that is using that road, it may, maybe that we need to improve the road base and road surface. Preservation for gravel roads, we, we typically re-gravel our roads every one to three, three years. We try and have three to five inches of granular material like. On the road for the, for the vehicles to travel on. Gravel can break down over time, which means under the traffic loads, they, the gravel well. Like actually fracture and break and it loses its effectiveness. And obviously gravel also gets displaced on to the roadside. As. Vehicles travel over it. There are. There are ways that you can reclaim some of that gravel, but this is not a, not always a very cost-effective process. So let's talk about rural road improvement. These, a rural road improvement can be. Triggered by a variety of things. Most commonly, the existing condition of the road or, or the existing, the existing or expected use. So if, for example, a road sees a large amount of growth. Or if the type of traffic that is using that road does change due to some sort of development. Criteria to, to, to warrant, looking at the improve, the improvement of a rural, rural road. The roadway platform must have a width greater than six point six meters. It must have a stable, well-compacted road base. It must have adequate roadside drainage. The right away generally free of those roadside hazards, but again, where they, they exist, they can be. Protected by, by engineered barriers. And then, of course, the key trigger here is the, is the traffic and that is part of what this process. That we're talking, what we're talking about today. That AADT value, what we want that to be. Currently, that is for a gravel to surface treated road, the existing. Policy states that's four hundred vehicles a day, for your reference. There are other factors that we, we should consider when talking about improving a rural, rural road. Higher than normal maintenance costs. And isolation which basically means that that, that we have a, a. Gravel road that is the only gravel, gravel road in that, in that, that area that usually coincides with higher maintenance costs. Connectivity which basically speaks to a road that connects to our. Imperial roads and or a road that leads to and from a hamlet or a village. To coincide with that, we also would like to consider eliminating all gravel roads. Within hamlets and villages and roads that, that experience inconsistent events. Causing high AADTs and some of the examples of those would be. Pits and quarries, campgrounds, golf courses. So, so now we'll go through a few scenarios. So we've got a road. We have, we have a road here that has seen. Consistent residential growth over several years and now has an AADT of two hundred and sixty-five. The platform is only six point eight meters wide, but it can be widened. The roadside ditches generally function well, but do require some attainable work. And based on all of this, it is, it is, it is viable that this road would be a candidate for. Upgrade to an LCB surface. Funding to be deter- determined. Another common or potentially common, maybe not so common scenario is we have a roadway. That has seen an increase in heavy truck traffic due to the development. Of a pit or quarry and now has an AADT of three hundred and sixty-five. This road would more likely be a candidate for, for investigation to, to bring it to an, to an asphalt. Standard, just simply because we don't really want to have. Those heavy, heavy trucks driving over a surface treated or a. On LCB's surface. The improved, the improvement or the improvement for a road such as this could be partially funded through or in whole. Funded through the. What's it called? The, the reserve, the. The aggregate royalties reserve. Thank you. This scenario speaks to. We have seen minor growth along this, this road, but it still only has an AADT of one hundred and sixty-seven. Surrounding roads have seen more substantial growth and have since been improved to an LCB surface. This remains, this road is the remaining gravel road in the. Um, area and is considered, considered, considered isolated. Again, this would be a viable candidate to improve to an LCB surface. And some scenario, the. Or for. We have a road here that has seen my, minor growth and has an AADT of one hundred and eighty-nine. Service requests and complaints for, from residents about, about the. Condition of the road are high. However, maintenance requirements are, are generally routine. Not high. This would not be a candidate for improvement. This is a, you may have seen a matrix similar to this in the pre- the previous policy. This is just a simplified version of that. Matrix and that is something, that's a tool that, that we can use or, or that we, that we can use to help us determine. Whether or not a roadway is viable for, for improvement. So now let's talk about roadway, roadway improvement. I'm in the urban areas. The majority, majority of township-owned road, roadways in urban areas. Are already HCB or asphalt. There are two primary cross, typical cross-sections for, for these urban roads. You got semi-urban. Which consists of open ditch roadside and you have full urban which consists of full. Storm sewer curb and gutter. There are two major or two main reasons why we would consider upgrading a urban road, roadway. The first one is, is, is based. Or is due to private development which. Which ultimately would fall upon the developer to carry out those improve, improvements. And then, of course. A project that would be triggered through asset management and, and one of the most common. Examples of this is where we are having storm water management issues and we need to. Send that water to a more appropriate place through buried stormwater infrastructure. This would. Trigger having to upgrade the road to a full urban cross-section. In summary, an acceptable road is well-drained, wide enough for its use and free of unprotected hazards. Road, roadways have three typical surface types, gravel, LCB and HCB. We, we preserve our roads in different ways to, to extend their life and keep them in good repair. The existing triggers for roadway improvement are not necessarily appropriate. Consideration should be given to reducing the, the ADT thresholds for rural road improvements. Urban roadway improvement is largely triggered by developers or asset management. Do I read this? Okay, so council recommendation that, that council receive the municipal road preservation and improvement plan report and provide direction to staff. Regarding, regarding the next steps in the review and potential development. Of a new municipal roadway improvement and preservation policy. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. I'll turn to the committee for any initial questions on the report. Counselor Ennis.
Thank you, sir, the chair. First of all, just thank you very much to staff for doing this report. I think it's very helpful. In helping answer the public's questions about when the roads get improved and when not. It's what. One of the top questions I'd say I get and probably all of council get. So I think this is very, very valuable work. Just a question for clarity on, for example, on page four, there's the list of the top ten gravel roads by, by daily trips. So like, are we, are we talking about in this, if this policy or an updated policy were to be adopted? Down the road, that top ten list based solely on daily trips. Could change with other factors being taken into account other than daily trips. Is that? Fair to say, or this top ten list is always just based on daily trips?
Yes, this, the table on, on that you're, you're referring to, it does speak to just the traffic.
But so, so for, those are the top ten current based on traffic, you know, if. In the future, are other. Issues outside of traffic, you know, the ones you listed, I can't remember that it's, you know, at an intersection and so forth. Are those new things to be taken into consideration or have they all sort of always?
Some of these, some of the factors that, that I mentioned were briefly, I guess, mentioned in the previous policy or the existing. There are, there, there, there are some that are, I guess you could call them new, but yeah. Those actors would be considered, 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 considered along with the AADT trigger.
Other questions? Would it, would it be helpful for the committee if I ask staff to go through and explain those scenarios in a little more detail as well? Or is everybody, everybody's got it? Other questions? Mr. Mayor?
I just have a couple of questions on the scenarios on page five. The. Dollar value per kilometer for upgrades. At the surface treatment or at HCB. Do they include if there's any. Structural improvements in, in the road base, like soft spots or anything like that or. Drainage, anything to meet the criteria that was mentioned for an upgrade, all of that, is that included in that or is that just strictly the. Driving surface, the surface treatment or the asphalt?
Yes, these, these costs do. These costs do include the base and the surface. So a granular base. And it certainly does not include any improved improvements necessarily to the, to the roadside. Drainage or brushing or anything like that.
Okay. It was mentioned in here about like winter maintenance and things. And in the overall investment over the thirty-year lifespan on, what page is that? Six, it's the next page. I'm assuming is the increased cost for winter maintenance included in this as well? So what I'm thinking is if it goes from gravel to surface treatment, it would. Your traction is a little bit reduced, so it might be some more plowing and, and. Sanding or a mix or something like that. If there's anything like that that's operational, was it included in this? Overall investment for the thirty years?
So it was actually viewed that even though you bring a gravel road to a surface or a hard surface. In general, you, you would not see any drastic change in the operation. In general, you you would not see any drastic change in the operating cost to perform that that work.
Okay. You already answered some of my questions with your presentation, so well done there. I believe. Just just to. I believe that your I believe this question may have been addressed with Council Ennis's question, but. We do have a couple of roads where we have high truck traffic, but low volume overall. Due to quarries and things like that, you know, on roads such as that. If the ADTs are still well below requirement, but the truck traffic is very high, would they still be considered? For potential upgrade or does the ADT overall have to? Meet the criteria before the truck traffic comes into play? And I'm the reason I'm asking is in the matrix, the truck traffic doesn't come in unless you're going from surface treatment to HCB. But if there's a gravel road that has very high truck traffic, low ADT, lower ADT. Would it ever hit the criteria to be considered for asphalt?
So in a scenario like that, I I think what staff would end up wanting to do is to execute like a traffic study on that road. Just to get a better picture of what the traffic actually looks looks like. Part of that process would be because when we do traffic counts, we can't capture. Like every event and we may not capture any event and we still might not see where those higher. Trip. Events happen. So we could we there it's possible that we could work with those operators to see if they could provide us with the data that they. Probably have with the number of trips that they have per year. From those sites, which then would help with that study, which then would. Help us decide whether or not that road needs to be brought up to. A higher standard.
Okay, thank you. Is appropriate to make a comment as well at this point? Good, thank you. I'm just going to make a comment. My my big concern with with a lot of plans we do, my big concern is. How do we pay for once we've? Brought a plan in that. Obviously will be increasing costs. Unless there's a lot of grants that come forward, it is it's a challenge to maintain what we have, let alone improving. So and in all of the. Plans so far that I've seen, there's always been a little caveat about. Funding when when funding is available or like, and I guess where I'm going is if somebody lives. I know some people live on some of these roads and I know that if they're on the list, the first thing first call I'll get is. The road's going to be upgraded next year. Well, if there's no funding, then no. We can't do that. So they're just the caveats of. Pending, you know, approved funding or something along those lines. It still concerns me because we give a we give a false hope if we if we can't get the funding, then we're. It's going to be delayed doing the upgrade. But if there is a caveat like that, at least. It's something that we can be working towards. But then funding may not be here now. And I guess the only other thing that hit me is after watching the presentation on the asset management plan. I'm not sure how that impacts the asset management plan going forward. And increases the division between the funding we have and the funding we need. And I guess that's a probably a question for Mr. Scott. Those are just my concerns. I'm not saying that I disagree with it. I'm just presenting what my thoughts are. When we're trying to, as as was mentioned, when we're being questioned by the public, we just want to make sure that we have. Suitable response.
Counsel Ennis?
Thank you through the chair, just to to sort of follow on from some of the mayor's comments. The the caveat that, you know, if funding is available and that there's some some flexibility, but when these. Potential investments may or may not happen, I think is important to consider sort of on a year to year basis. I think, you know, obviously every municipality has a, you know, a spectrum of need to do over the nice nicer to do. And then you've got a bunch of stuff in the in the middle. So, you know, do I think some of these potential investments? Should be on the table to be considered? Yes, but I I, you know, echo the point that, you know. Pending available funding and that the township has some flexibility about sort of when to implement those potential investments.
Sure.
Whoops, I don't want to leave it as a totally negative statement. I think they did come across that way. With 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 a. If 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 the policy does change and it. Then I I see what I say about the funding and everything. It's great to have the policies so that. You know, staff. Have identified roads to be working towards upgrading and things like that. It does have its positives. It's just that the actual hardtop may not show up for a little bit because there would be some grade work to do. There might be some soft spots to fix. Ditching frame removal for shaded areas that and things like that. So I'm not totally negative on this. I'm not like it's. I've been waiting for this to come for a while, so I'm glad it's here. I just didn't want to leave it as a total negative that I'm against it. It is a good plan to be able to work towards the future as long as. We can show that we're working towards the future, but we just haven't made it there yet.
Counsel Willis.
Building on what the the mayor mentioned about the asset management plan that we. Just went through, I think it would also be helpful if we're looking at at the different types of surfaces to understand the cost to maintain that surface. Over twenty years. So the difference between gravel, chip and tar and asphalt because. That could be quite substantial and that should be part of the decision making.
Go ahead, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Counselor Willis. That actually part of that is addressed in the report as far as. Page six, so a surface treated road. Over the life of that road for thirty years is is a total investment of six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That equates to to an investment per year to replace that road of. Twenty two thousand three three hundred dollars. That factors in all of the. Reasonable treat treatments that would occur over the life of that road. Plus a factor for the routine ma- ma- maintenance that staff may do. To the surface, not like nothing else.
Questions, comments? Well. Yep, Counsel Proderic.
Just ask a question. Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question on the recommendation, the second part. I'm not too clear. Are we going to provide recommendations or direction or? You know, that's sort of wide open there. I don't know what that means. Sure, and I'll go to the director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, at this point in time, the scenarios are options if council wishes to change the current policy. If council wishes us to change the current policy, those are some. In in the research that. Our public manager has done, these are some options that council could look at if they wanted to do that. If they would like us to look at that, then what we would do is take that back, present a new policy and it would come back to council for approval.
So what are the committee's wishes? Unwilling to. You, Counsel Proderic?
I was I was just going to suggest that we receive the report and move it to council. For decision on. Accepting it or whatever. I don't know, like it just.
No.
No?
I mean, essentially essentially that would be a vote to maintain the status quo of the existing of the existing policy.
So you're saying this wasn't the new policy. This is the policy as it is now.
Well, if we want the new policy, then we would we would be looking at, you know, there are three scenarios in there. We'd be looking at. Basically, the key issue is lowering the the.
The threshold. Yeah, I'm I'm reading.
That's kind of the.
Different than you're reading. Oh, the alternatives, okay. I'm all for the status quo, but that's just me.
Do you want that as a motion? Are you willing to make that as a motion? Okay, the motion, the motion, the motion is to maintain.
Maintain the status quo without changing existing levels of service for improving a roadway. There would be no improvements to roads in the municipality for the foreseeable future.
Okay, I have a seconder for that motion. One once. Like twice. Second for discussion by the mayor. Counsel Proderic?
I guess my. My worry in maybe going to. This four scenarios is that you are going to pit road A neighbors against road B or our scenario is this, but what about that? And I like something that's. Let's look at AADT. So, you know, here here's where it is. And let's face it, the money isn't going to follow the sky from any ministry to repair roads. And I think we have to have some kind of. And I think Mr. McDonald sort of. It made it there that we have it based on numbers, but there may be extenuating circumstances. I don't know if. If scenarios is the way to go. That's just, you know, my thoughts off the top of my head.
Go ahead, go ahead, Director McConnell.
Sorry, sorry, I apologize. The scenarios were just examples of if we were to utilize the. The matrix that was there and. And the matrix that that is there is actually in our current policy that we have. It's just. If council wished to lower the thresholds. So currently, the the threshold is four hundred ADT. And a thousand ADT. So, you know, we wanted to provide counsel some idea or some options of if they were lowered. Based on our road counts, these are a couple of the roads that could be impacted. If that is something council wished to do, then like any other changes, they would have to come back through council and be part or like come back through in a reg. Sorry, the budget process and presented and approved in that way. But the key thing here is the matrix. That was that is in the current policy would just be modified a little bit for a little clearer. Pathway because it's a little confusing in the current policy. And then if. Council wished to lower those thresholds or those triggers, then we could look at that. We would bring all of that back. And present a new policy for council. If the direction is that we look at that and we we do, you do wish to lower, then. We would bring that back to council for final approval as a policy. If council doesn't wish to lower any of the thresholds and maintain the policy as it is, then, you know. That's that's fine and that's, you know, that's council's that's council's wish and and we would continue.
Okay, I have a better understanding of it now. And I and I guess in the thresholds. Are we going to change all the thresholds or are we going to look at, you know, I'm just thinking. A influx of gravel roads becoming the next level up. You know, do you change that threshold and leave everything the same? Or is that just one scenario that? Could come to council?
So. I don't think there is an expectation that there's going to be an influx of gravel roads come up to a to any of the levels that we are proposing proposing now. There are a few that if the lowering of that level. Was accepted that there would be a few that would fall under the the banner of. Being qualified. But based on. Like I'm I'm not a planner, but based on growth that we're seeing it like in the rural areas, it would be. Shocking if there were other roads that did come into play.
I'm going to come to the seconder and then I'm going to go to Carol Park, Counsel Parks, and then Counsel Willis. And then Counsel Ennis. Okay, your last, Counsel Proderic. To the mayor.
This is going to sound odd, but I've got I've got a couple of questions because I I seconded for discussion. I'm still processing some of it. Upgrades from surface treatment to hard to asphalt. In in just in traveling the roads, our surface treated roads appear to be in good shape, like with the single lift applied. Periodically and, you know, maintenance as required. So. In in putting more thought into it, we if we lowered a gravel road criteria. Area but left the surface treatment the same. Would that the? In your experience, would that be detrimental? Like, do some of the surface treated roads? Do they really deserve to be asphalt because of early deterioration or? Types of traffic or anything like that?
So from my experience, I my gut reaction when I saw a thousand ADT on a surface treated road was that was too high. Now, could we have roads that are surface treated treated hold up fine under those those types of traffic loads? Yes. But I've seen roads that that don't. So. The only road that comes to mind in this township would be Simmons Road. Lead leading, yeah, it's I'm Simmons, right? Leading to Wilton?
From County Road Six in through Wilton? Okay. That's a heavily traveled road. Okay.
Where's that? Where's the table?
Yes, sorry. So that that would be one example of a road. I mean, this township that I would and because it does lead to a village as well. That that I would see. Potentially warranting that improvement. However, is it holding up? Okay, yes, it is.
Yeah. It's hard to know how to speak to this, but I was the seconder. And I'm still making up my mind. I I see the benefit in. Lowering. The criteria. Some. The other part of it is offsetting the costs. And I guess the other thing that goes through my mind is is there, and this is something this can't be answered here this evening probably is. Are there? In are there higher levels of maintenance that could be done, which is cheaper than an upgrade, but would? Keep the existing surface in a better condition. So there's too much like there's I've I've got a lot of questions still going through my mind and I really don't have answers for them. But. I am okay with it staying the same, but I do see the benefit of potentially some of the gravel roads being upgraded. I'll let everyone else speak.
Very well, Counsel Parks.
Thank you through the chair, and I'm not sure. I'm just trying to wrap my head around all of this, too. For the ADT. Is there like an industry standard that the roads use to establish what that threshold would be? And. I guess, are we in compliance with what that would be with? Other municipalities? I'm not really sure what the.
Yes, thank you. The, to be fair, there is no. The only standard that I've been able to find is a Ministry of Transportation guide from two thousand thirteen. Called. called is referenced here in the, in the report, I can't recall what it's called. When we polled the neighboring municipalities, it was very common to hear that there's no, they don't have any standard or policy that they follow. Some of them do reference that guide, that, that, that MTO has. And in that guide, it does, it does reference a thousand AADT for the upgrade to the asphalt, and it references as low as four hundred or four hundred and lower for upgrade to ser- service treatment. But it was, it was quite common to, to hear when I spoke with my colleagues that they're, they're faced with the same problem, there's no standard, there's just a lot of rule of thumb.
Not sure if this would be for the director or for the CIO. If there's a reduction in the threshold and there was an accident on the road and we've lowered that threshold, is there any liability for the township? No?
No, kind of like when the road maintenance council sets policy, and as long as we abide by whatever policy that's set, then, then the liability is, is limited to, to council that way. I think in, in this case, it's, it's a service level issue, and it's, it's what level of service council wishes to do and, and has been discussed extensively. It, it really is what we can afford to set our service levels at.
So again, going back to the mayor's comments about making sure that there's something in there about when it's available, funds are available, would probably just again add some extra coverage.
Council Willis?
One of my questions was answered, and that was what are our neighboring municipalities doing so that we're consistent? And I guess the other is just an observation that, you know, the roads are changing in our township because we've got so much residential development on what are existing gravel roads. So I think it's worth taking a look at what the options are, because I think the expectations are changing.
Council Ennis?
I, I would like to see some form of an updated policy come back to council for a decision. I think it's, you know, particularly as the mayor mentioned, perhaps some of the gravel to chip and tar as potential investments. If nothing else, but to keep it as an, as a topic of conversation that those are potentially worthwhile investments that could be considered against all the other investments we, we consider, you know, or other councils, future councils consider e- each year. So, and that's, but on the other hand, during necessarily the best idea to have a hard and fast rule that once it drops below a certain daily trips, it's, triggers an automatic investment? Probably, probably not. I, I think we probably want more flexibility. But I think that prop, that, that need for some flexibility could probably be addressed in a, in a, in a in a policy that comes back to council.
Council Proderic?
Most of my colleagues actually asked all but one and more as a statement along with just what Counselor Ennis said. Updating the policy and giving our, our staff who are very good at their jobs, we know that, a little bit of flexibility to exercise their expertise, to come back to us and recommend some possibilities of, of updates as, as our municipality does change and evolve.
Any further discussion on this particular motion, which I have a feeling may get lost, but? Council Proderic? You are the mover.
There's been a lot of good dialogue here, and I'm not disappointed if this motion is lost, but I, I do think the in my opinion, the, the lower level of, like the gravel level, we need to address that because that, I hear more of that, and I, I'm, you know, in that Ward Three. The second thing is that the flexibility in terms of the monetary thing, you know, it'd be great to have a list of, you know, like the CIO, the ten worst roads in Loyalist, but we can't fix all ten at once, and I think that's the bottom line is that look at the policy, that the provisor, the, the the caveat is, is based on funding, that's it, you know? Because we all want better roads, there's no question, but it's all driven by the, the funding and the budget process.
Okay, I will call the question on the original motion, which was that we remain complete status quo with no changes to the existing policy. I'll call the question, all those in favor? All those opposed? That motion is lost, so I would seek an alternative. Council Willis?
Move that the report from the Public Works Division dated August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five re municipal road preservation and improvement plan be received. And that sorry. And that direction be provided to staff that they consider other AADT thresholds and/or factors for considering improving a roadway. And?
I, I'm guessing the director wants, wants more specific.
If I may, it might be helpful if there was a number added or provided in terms of the threshold that you would like us to look at.
So of the scenarios that are, for, for instance, within the report, one, two, and three, the lowest of which is two.
Sorry, recognizing that it's currently at four hundred for the trigger to go from gravel to surface treatment along with other criteria. We could look at three hundred, we could look at two fifty, we could look at two hundred. You know, those are kind of some options, we've given two options. And then if the other side of it is to go from HCB, sorry, HBC? Yeah, yeah, sorry, it's, it's late. For asphalt, it's currently at a thousand. Do we wish to maintain that, or do we wish to look at, at lowering that as well?
Council Willis?
What I meant with my motion was that we look at what is listed as scenario two. So reducing the AADT threshold for surface treatment from four hundred to three hundred, and that the threshold for asphalt remain at a thousand.
Okay. I'm going to just wait for the clerk, because she is typing that down and can read it out. Well, I think we all heard that, so I'll take a seconder in the meantime. Council Proderic seconds that. Comments, Council Willis?
Nothing beyond what's been discussed.
Council Proderic? Others? Will seem good with that. So yeah, if you want to put it up on the screen, I mean, everybody heard, but I think for the viewing public, if they're still watching. So it is that the report from the Public Works Division dated August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five re municipal road preservation improvement plan be received, and two, that staff be directed to draft a new municipal roadway improvement and preservation policy, which provides consideration for the comments provided at this committee of the whole meeting, and A, reducing the AADT threshold from gravel road treatment to service treatment from four hundred to three hundred, B, threshold for asphalt remain at a thousand AADT, and three, that the draft policy be brought to a future council meeting for final consideration. That suits you, Council Willis, as apt to your original motion. Council Proderic, any further discussion? Call the question, all those in favor? Motion is carried. And that takes us to adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn committee of the whole? Council Parks, seconded by Council Proderic, all those in favor? Motion is carried, we are adjourned at nine P M.
Okay, we're back into the council meeting. Next up, are there any notices of motion to be presented this evening? Saying none, are there any direct motions to be received this morning, this evening? Saying none, consent agenda? We have a few items on it, any can be extracted that you wish to pull for, or they can all be in the recommendation, they can all be, the motion, they can all be included in one motion. Council Willis?
Request that we extract fifteen point two?
Fifteen two, okay. Are there any other items that you wish to extract? Saying none, could I have a recommendation for everything but fifteen point two? Council Proderic?
I'd recommend that all items in the consent agenda, save item fifteen point two dated August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, be approved as presented and necessary action be taken.
So moved, seconded by Deputy Mayor Townen. Any comments from the mover, seconder, other members? Call the question, all in favor? Motion is carried. And fifteen point two, do you wish to address that, Councilor?
Some questions for our treasurer? Through the chair. So I'm just looking at the report, and I may be reading it incorrectly, but what I'm seeing is that in two thousand twenty-four, the department missed budget by three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that we've got eight hundred and seventy-one currently in our reserve. This year's building activity report is lower than last year. So I'm just wondering, is there a forecast for where things are going to end up this year? What the impact is going to be on that reserve? And, and was that reserve built up during a boom time? Or, you know, I'm, I'm just worried that we're going to deplete a reserve that's not going to get built up back again. Just because we're in this period and maybe for a couple of years.
Yes, through you, your worship, just to answer, Council Willis. The, so we don't have a projection right now as to what it's going to be for the end of two thousand twenty-five, although we are taking a look and seeing that the numbers are coming in a little bit lower. Just going back to the question, yes, the reserve is built up at a time when there was a boom. So what happens with building permits is that you take them current year, but it can take up to two years for the actual permit to be completed, so that there, the money's set into a reserve, and then it's applied as we, we use the money when we have times when we're not collecting as much money, so. But it can take up to two years before you finalize that. So you would take out the permit, or you would make the application now. There'd be a couple of inspections, and then there'd be an occupancy permit at that time, right? So, so it makes sense that there is a dip right now in the fact that, well, with the economy, the way that it is. So that's when we would utilize this money, but we are projecting that we probably will end up having to use some more of the funds in two thousand twenty-five. However, the money that was collected, you'll see, if you take a look at that, that same financial statement, there's more money that was collected in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-two. And so we're now at the end of it, we're now finishing up some of those projects. One of the recommendations will be to take a look back at the number of permits that we do have outstanding. That's one of the things that's come up in this year's audit as well, is to see how many permits we actually do have outstanding in the system, and then figure out exactly what we're going to need going forward into two thousand twenty-six budget. So it will come back up for the budget. Does that help?
Thank you, that's all I have for this.
Deputy Mayor Townen?
Then I move to receive fifteen point two.
So moved, seconded by Council Proderic. Comments from the mover, seconder, other members? Call the question, all in favor? Motion is passed, thank you. Announcements, are there any announcements this evening? Council Proderic?
I got two real quick ones. I want to wish Annie Neiman, who's a resident of Amersall, best in the Canada Summer Games. She's representing Ontario in wrestling, and she'll be on CBC Gem the twenty-first, twenty-second, and hopefully twenty-third, getting the gold. And I would like to announce that the mayor will be joining me in a golf tournament on the twenty-ninth of April, August. And I'm sure his team is going to have the big one to carry, and good luck with that.
Well, that news traveled fast. Thank you. Any other, if I find a set of clubs, if, is there any other announcements this evening? I just want to, just one, the Fairfield Goodsite House had their grand reopening, and it was well-attended. The evening was well-spent as well, with the music provided. And just kudos to staff, consultants, contractors, everybody that was involved. The house does look amazing, and it, the open, the reopening went out very well, so kudos to staff that organized that as well. And we thank the CIO for emceeing the event, too. So that I would take a motion to adjourn. Confirmatory by, thank you, that's nice tonight.
I move that bylaw two thousand twenty-five dash fifty-three to confirm the proceedings of the Council of Loyalist Township enacted and passed, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign and seal.
So moved, seconded by Council Proderic, all in favor? Motion, motion is carried. And now I take a motion to adjourn. Council Willis, so moved, seconded by Council Proderic, all in favor? Motion is carried, we are adjourned at.